Welcome to our Candidates Forum for Portland City Council Position Two. It will last approximately 45 minutes. I am your moderator, Debbie Kay, with the League of Women Voters of Portland. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that works to help citizens make informed choices in elections. We do not endorse any candidate or political party, but rather we give voters the information they need to select a candidate. Membership information is available on our website and at the table on where you entered. We thank Neil Kelly Design and Paloma Clothing for their generous contributions to our education fund to make these forums possible. Today's forum is being recorded by Portland Community Media, and we're grateful to them as well. This is the first of six forums that the League of Women Voters is presenting before the May 20th primary election. We hope you'll attend them all. All forums will be available for on-demand viewing from a link on our website, L W V P D X dot org. To view the forums on local access cable TV, see the playback schedule posted on our website and in your programs. Voters can also look at our nonpartisan Voters Guide for answers to questions posed to all candidates, as well as a nonpartisan presentation of the ballot measure. The Voters Guide is here in print form and also on our website, L W V P D X dot org. You will also find copies at Multnomah County Library Branches, and those are free, and at the Multnomah County Elections Office. Another important voter resource is housed at the Secretary of State's website. It's called O R E S T A R and enables you to see the financial sources for campaigns to follow the money. Type O R E S T A R into your browser. Finally, to see information about the candidates and ballot measures that will appear on your ballot, go to four one one dot org, excuse me, vote four one one dot org. Enter your street address, follow the instructions, and the Voters Guide information for only those items on your ballot will appear, and that will enable you to do candidate comparisons as well. The candidates in today's forum are running in the May 20th primary election. If one candidate for the position receives 50 percent plus one votes in the primary, that candidate will be declared the winner. If no one receives more than 50 percent of the vote, the top two candidates will appear on the November general election ballot. If you have not yet registered to vote, the last day to do so is April 29th. We have voter registration cards in the room. You may count, excuse me, contact your county elections office or register online at vote Oregon dot org. Ballots will begin to be mailed on April 30th. And now, onto our forum. The League of Women Voters has invited all the candidates running for city council position two. Present today and seated at my left in the order in which they will appear on the ballot are Sharon Maxwell, Michael Duro, and Nick Fish. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will rotate the questions for each round so that the same candidate is not always the first to answer or the last. The candidates will have one minute to respond. Members of the audience are invited to write your questions. Please write legibly on the cards being distributed for that purpose. Timekeepers sitting in the front row, and thank you very much, will signal a 15-second warning and then stop when the speaker's time has expired. Let us begin. Question one, and beginning with you. Given the limitations of Oregon's current tax system, what ideas do you have for meeting the services needs and infrastructure needs of Portland?
Thank you, Debbie, and thank you, audience, and thank you, Women League of Voters, Sharon Maxwell. What I would propose is single-member districts. Single-member districts is similar to where the counties elected commissioners are elected. That will allow us to do a better planning as far as budgets, being more connected with citizens in the community, and overall planning for growth, seeing that the city is projecting over a million people within the next 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you're speaking of revenue. First of all, I want to thank you for having us here today. I'll get straight to the issue. I think what we need is a vehicle mileage tax. A vehicle mileage tax would act both as an incentive to drive less and it would act, it would catch all the people who currently are having hybrid cars, electric cars, and other forms of non-gas transportation, maybe natural gas, other things. I am totally opposed to any kind of sales, city sales tax, but I'm, and I'm also open to the idea of taxing property at a higher rate. Instead of taxing the houses at a higher rate, tax the land at a higher rate. That would, that would give people an incentive to use some of the empty spaces that people are just sitting on, and it would cause more infill to the city, and that would be good for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, League of Women Voters, not just for this forum, but for being regular participants in the great debates that happen in City Hall. And I appreciate the chance to be here with you today as I seek reelection to my second four-year term. And I'm going to give you an answer which puts a little twist on your question, which is, we're tapped out. We, as a city and a state, are tapped out. And I would take us back in time to when Newt Gingrich was the Speaker of the House of Representatives. And Newt Gingrich had a plan. It was to shrink the federal government and to make all the responsibilities that used to be federal the concerns of our state and local governments. So he, his first step was to defund Superfund. There is nothing super about Superfund, and there's no fund in Superfund, and yet the biggest potential tax increase in our history looms over our river because Newt Gingrich decided we would no longer tax polluters to fund the cleanup of our, of our major waterways. You could go on and on, the defunding of federal housing, the lack of revenue sharing for our cities. I would say, let's reinvest in our state and city, and the federal government should lead the way.
Thank you. Our second question, we'll start with you, Michael Duro. The mayor is proposing to reorganize Portland's urban renewal districts. What do you see as optimal outcomes from this reorganization?
Well, I'm happy to see this reorganization. Right now, a lot of people in the Pearl District pay a lower tax rate than people in southeast Portland or northeast Portland, and that's a crime. They live in million-dollar houses, and because of the way the ballot measures 15 and five, I think it was 15, or was it 13? Anyway, the way the ballot, the way the tax system was rewritten in the early, in the earlier part of the century, they pay less in taxes on their houses, and that needs Urban renewal districts take money away from things like the school districts. It's actually, I don't totally understand the calculation, but it's actually cut out of what can be collected. So to, to, to reduce the amount of money collected for urban renewal is a good idea as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
So, the future of the Portland Development Commission and urban renewal. I believe, Debbie, this will be one of the three big debates that we have as a city government in the next two years, and so let me tell you the framework that I will use and that will inform my decision-making. Number one, the mayor has announced his intention to give urban renewal a haircut. That is, to close down some urban renewal districts like the Willamette Industrial District, take some capacity out of some others, and shrink our footprint by at least 15 percent. I support that. That will also accelerate putting dollars back on the tax rolls for our county, our city, and our school district at a time. They need those resources. Number two, the mayor has said that he's not sure we should focus on job creation going forward. He said maybe we should look more at something called placemaking. I'm not sure what that means, but I think the last five years has proven that job creation should be our primary focus. And number three, I will stand shoulder to shoulder with Debbie and everyone in this room to protect the 30 percent set aside for affordable housing. We cannot lose that vital resource. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Maxwell?
Can you repeat the question?
Of course. The mayor is proposing to reorganize Portland's urban renewal districts. What do you see as optimal outcomes from this reorganization?
I agree with the reorganization, but as you all know, urban, urban renewal districts were created for blighted neighborhoods. The city, first of all, and city council, has never had a strategic plan or a plan that really is effective to make sure that these blighted neighborhoods have actually gotten the money. Single-member districts is the way to go. We've never voted on that. We've had that before, and I believe that it would work so that there would be a better planning and strategic plan for all of the 95 neighborhoods to make sure we have citizen involvement at all times on how our city looks. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third question, starting with Nick Fish. How should our limited housing resources be spent, considering the costs of building housing in various parts of the city and the severe shortage of housing affordable to very low-income households?
Debbie, can I have an extra 10 minutes to answer that question? I ran for the city council on a platform of bringing all of the city's housing programs and funding sources under one roof. And for too long, we had a fragmented system that was working at odds, and we, out of this, created the new Portland Housing Bureau. And there is some conversation, some talk of changing our priorities going forward, investing in so-called workforce housing and other housing for which I'm not convinced the market isn't already meeting the need. So as long as I have a vote, these are my priorities. Focus on the neediest in our community. Susan Emmons publishes a study every year through Northwest Pilot Project. 19,000 households in our community cannot afford basic shelter. They're either not able to find market-rate housing, affordable housing, or they're paying well above 30 percent of their income. We can't allow that to happen. As long as we have a housing crisis in our community, our focus should be in families and individuals in need.
And?
The commissioner is correct in that he created the new Portland housing whereby which he allowed and did not allow any proper checks and balances on the $357 million that was lent out to the developers interest-free, money that should have went to low-income and affordable housing. The projects that did go forward, 92 percent of them are in the Pearl Districts and South Waterfront, while the rest of the city's neighborhoods do not have affordable housing and everyday working people who are struggling to meet their basic needs. We, as city commissioners, we need to make sure that we have a single-member district. What that will allow us to do is plan better and make sure we have citizen involvement so that the most neediest citizens, as well as the city, we can make sure that all people have a good quality of life and affordable housing.
Thank you. Michael Duro.
Well, one of the great, one of the great developments in this last legislature was that Section Eight was, you can no longer deny someone housing that comes with a Section Eight voucher. That's the first step. I think that we need to focus on low and medium-income housing, but one of the things that we're totally missing here is the fact that, that minimum wage has not kept up with the economy and everybody else. And I think we need somewhere between a $13 and a $15 an hour minimum wage, and that would, that would help a lot of the people who can't afford any housing, who work every single day, one and two, to sometimes more jobs. I would like to go to the, to the state legislature and ask them for permission to, to do that, to have our own Portland minimum wage, or put it on the ballot measure to see if we can get our own, have metropolitan areas have their own minimum wage, because we have our own price structure.
Thank you. Our next question, starting with Ms. Maxwell. The U.S. Department of Justice found a number of problems with both our police bureau's use of force against mentally ill residents and our oversight system. To what extent should all members of city council be responsible for monitoring the Department of Justice settlement agreement and for overseeing the police bureau in general?
Thank you, Debbie. First of all, is the fact that our city council has lacked the courage, the political will, and the leadership of why we are even here today and why the Department of Justice had to be summoned per the request of the Obano Ministerial Alliance. They requested that the city of Portland bring the Department of Justice to do an audit over the whole police bureau's, all of their training, the whole bureau, all of its practices. First of all, we have thrown away way too much money. Now we're going to get ready to throw away $25 million because our current city leadership has failed leadership, courage, and the political will. I actually testified at the hearing as a longtime resident who has experienced, who has suffered, who has seen other people in this community suffer through the excessive force, through the discrimination, the racial profiling of our police system. We need to hold our elected officials accountable. They should demonstrate with leadership and courage to make sure all citizens through the 95 neighborhoods are protected and that our civil liberties and civil rights are protected. Thank you.
Well, as a young college man, I can say that both myself and my brother, my father, my uncle, everybody in my family, at least the males in my family, have all experienced being stopped by the police. I have a lot of friends that have been beat by the police, both black and white. That's a problem, but right now, what would do the most good is if we could change the charter so that the city council could, whenever they need to, fire the police chief. Right now, my understanding is, and I've looked at the charter, is that the, the police chief has their contract, and they have the right to serve out their contract. And we've seen before that they've had to go through all kinds of hoops in order to get police chiefs out. If the, if the city council could fire the police chief, it would, the police chief would work for the city council instead of working for the union. And that's the first step, because then, then they can take people off the street.
Thank you.
So before I had the honor of serving on the council, I was a civil rights lawyer, and in the 10 years before I was elected, I represented a lot of African-American leaders in our community that suffered discrimination. So I, I have a deep, passionate commitment to this issue, which is why I've spent so much time on it. Now, for the record, Mayor Adams and Commissioner Saltzman issued a formal letter to the Department of Justice inviting them to come in and investigate, and they did find that there were disparities in how we dealt with people experiencing mental health crises. So that is the issue before Judge Simon. I believe Judge Simon should maintain jurisdiction of this case. I agree with Commissioner Amanda Fritz that we should do at least two public hearings a year at City Hall, where the public can come testify on the progress under the consent decree. And we have a lot of work to do, but I'm heartened because a number of the things we've already done in embracing reforms that the auditor has suggested have made a difference. It's been 15 months since we had an officer-involved shooting involving someone experiencing a mental health crisis. Let's continue that progress.
Can I repeat that?
I'm sorry, not structured that way. You will have an opportunity perhaps in our, in your closing remarks.
Thank you.
Our next question, starting with Michael Duro. How can the city plan for meeting the future employment needs of Portland residents?
A good start was the governor's 2040-40 plan. I won't go into that, but the people that know about education know about that. The other thing we need to start doing is we need to start making some type of provision for the students that don't want to go on to college or that aren't suited to go on to college, because not everyone is suited to go, go on to college. I think that in the past 25 to 30 years, college has been oversold. It's not a panacea. I, I think that, that a lot of things, a lot of other things can be done. For instance, you, there's, there's a, a plan called Pay It Forward, where you would pay a certain percentage of your income towards paying, paying off your college degree for up to 30 years, and then you'd, you'd be off, and the federal government would pay the rest. That would, that would do so the people who couldn't actually get it, who never got a job based on their college education wouldn't be.
I need to ask you to stop.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. The number one issue in our community is growing good jobs, and I have a daughter who in a year will graduate from college, and she asked me, Dad, will there be a job for me in Portland that I can, that I can compete for? So there's four things I'd like to see in our jobs program going forward. Number one, continued investment in job training. There's a remarkable mismatch in our community between the skills that our high school graduates and even some of our college graduates have and the jobs that are growing in Portland, and we have to strengthen that connection. Number two is, we've got to support our neighborhood small businesses. 98 percent of our small businesses employ five or fewer employees. Imagine if we helped them add one or two employees and the impact on our community. Number three, we must continue to invest in public education. My son, Chapin, age 10, is in public school. My wife, Patricia, teaches at Portland State University. Our future is great public education, K through life, so that everybody starts life at the same place at that starting line. And finally, I want to see the Portland Development Commission continue to focus on jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question, Debbie?
Certainly. How can the city plan for meeting the future employment needs of Portland residents?
Thank you. Once again, I want to refer back to the single-member districts. Single-member districts will allow us to, first of all, take an audit of all of the bureaus to see where the cost savings are, so that we can make sure that we are able to actually have money so that we can invest in jobs. The second thing I would do is bring the PDC back under the city as a bureau, because we need to make sure that in a strategic plan and focus that it encompasses all 95 neighborhoods. Single-member districts will allow the city commissioner to focus on the neighborhood and that area so that they have a pulse on what's needed. We can prioritize citywide, what are the priorities, what are, where people are lacking. And as a business owner, I create an investment portfolio whereby we can identify for students and young people what their strong strengths are, their passions are, so that they can connect their education to a career future. And then we need to make sure, as the governor is seeking to do with the prosperity initiative, make sure that adults that are head of household are able to create a plan to have a second chance for their futures. Thank you.
Our next question, beginning with Nick Fish. What can the city do to increase transparency and accountability in how water and sewer dollars are spent?
Well, the first thing we can do is we can emphatically reject Measure 26156, because this will set all of our efforts back, and I think the, the one detail buried in this 26-page charter change that's the most cynical, is it would divest our city auditor of the authority to audit the books and records of this new entity. No one has accused Levon Griffith Vilade of being soft on local government or not calling it the way she saw it, and to simply divest her of authority tells us their commitment to transparency and accountability. There's two things I've done in the eight or so months that I've had the honor of leading the Water and Sewer bureaus to move the ball on transparency and accountability. The first is, I invited the Citizens Utility Board to come in and to be an outside independent advocate for our residential ratepayers, the first time they've ever been an advocate for ratepayers in a public utility. And the second, we had our first-ever rate hearing forum in which we explained to the public how we do rate-setting and sought their testimony. We'll build on that work.
Thank you.
I have to disagree with the commissioner as far as what he's just said. I first put my bid in at city council and rejecting the fact that CUB should be as the utility rate board, as, as an advisory group to the city because it hasn't been vetted by all citizens. They do not have a social equity conscious lens. Their members are limited to only those that can pay to be a part of that. As far as the information on the auditor not being able to audit the books, that is not true. I want to applaud the petitioners of the PUD that they have brought to the forefront, the abuse of our city commissioners that have used the Water Bureau's money and the Bureau of Environmental Services as a piggy bank, not just over the last three years, but it goes back even to Randy Leonard. We need to do an audit of all the city bureaus, day one, when I'm elected, because I want to identify where the money has gone, where, where the people's money has gone, because first of all, it's about you, the citizens, that you are not paying for things that really are not a priority. We have infrastructure, we have other projects, we want to make sure that all monies are used the right way. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to point out my position on this. My position is a no vote on the citizen, or the new water district. The water district is a Trojan horse. It's put together by water, large water consumers, it's put together by Tea Party activists, and it would not only hurt Portland, it would set us back. And I think that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Our next question, beginning with you with Maxwell. What steps should the city take to proactively overcome historic patterns of segregation, promote fair housing choice, and foster inclusive communities for all?
First of all, what the city needs to do is follow, first of all, the Constitution, where it says in the Declaration of Independence that all men are created equal and have been endowed with inelible rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and that we need to make sure that whatever we have in writing in the city charters throughout all 95 neighborhoods, all people matter, no matter what your background, no matter where you come from, no matter what your status is, that all people matter. Single-member districts, I'm going back to this because this is the way that we're going to have to go, is with a strategic plan that will allow us to have an alignment on what the bureau's priority should be, where the dollars should be going. We have over 2,000 miles of water pipe, sewer pipe, and storm drains pipe that needs to be replaced. Okay? So there's a lot of other ways that we can, through single-member district, make sure that there's not the segregation. We first of all, need to make sure that there's, that we don't promote discrimination, starting from the leadership down, and that we actually have an administration that values all people. Thank you.
Ms. Duro.
Yeah. My turn?
Yes.
I think Portland's doing a really good job on integration. The Portland that I moved here, moved to in 1980, or settled in in 1980, was a Portland where most of black people lived in northeast Portland and a few small enclaves, other places. Right now, people live everywhere, and people live together, and I think it's a really nice city. The idea of single-member districting would actually set us back. It would require a change of the charter, and it would allow people to be gerrymandered into districts where actually, certain neighborhoods would have much less control than they even have now.
So this is a very deep and complex question, but let me, let me go back to some work we've done where we're, we're making some progress. Historically, the largest housing program in the state of Oregon is called the Section Eight voucher program. It serves more people and more money goes into it, but the federal government never said that you couldn't discriminate against voucher holders. So for years, you've picked up the Oregonian and seen ads that say, "No, Section Eight need apply." Well, who is the Section Eight voucher holder in our community? In Portland, there are 8,000 vouchers. They are overwhelmingly and disproportionately older, single, people of color, with a disability. So we allowed a situation where our most vulnerable and protected community members were at risk of discrimination. Last year, I worked with Speaker Kotek to do what only 11 states have done, ban discrimination against Section Eight voucher holders, and starting July of this year, you will no longer be able to turn away someone simply because they're low-income and they have a voucher, and that is progress.
Homelessness considered, excuse me, homelessness continues to be a serious problem in Portland. While most homeless persons are law-abiding, their very presence makes some citizens feel unsafe. What specific steps should the city council take to reduce the conflicts without impinging on homeless persons' civil rights? Michael.
The homeless problem is not just one problem, it's actually several problems. You have the people who are alcohol and drug affected, you have veterans, you have homeless families, and you have people that have been de-institutionalized. And each one of these problems actually needs to be attacked in its own direction. So, but the money and, 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 and the authorities there to take care of most of these problems, it, it needs, it needs someone to, to lead this problem. Also, the, the biggest problem we have right now that I see that can't be affected by the, the tools we already have is the people that don't have enough money to live, and that, that could be affected by a, a higher minimum wage. I think that's, that would help a lot. There's a lot of people in my age group and younger that, that can't make it on what they're making, what they're making right now.
Well, consider the question against the backdrop of the, of the human dimension of this problem. The question was, how should we tackle the sidewalks? But I'm going to go upstream and ask, what is our moral obligation as a country to deal with the fact that hundreds of thousands of families and children and veterans and people experiencing mental illness and the disabled are homeless? Don't start with the sidewalk, because that lets us off the hook. Go upstream and ask, how in this great and prosperous nation did we allow so many people to be caught through the cracks experiencing homelessness? Now, I'm going to tell you two numbers that tell the story. The cost in terms of forfeited tax revenue at the federal level for funding The cost in terms of forfeited tax revenue at the federal level for funding a very generous mortgage deduction and allowing people to write off their property taxes is just under $200 billion. The entire budget of HUD, which provides housing for people in need, is $40 billion. I ask you, do we have our priorities straight?
I would like to say that our commissioner would allow you to believe that he is Robin Hood or Saint Nick, but that is not his track record. Per the Portland Housing Bureau, the audit company that they hired to do the audit on whether or not people of color and were being discriminated against for housing came back two times and identified that, yes, people are being discriminated for housing. The second thing is that with the $357 million that should have went to low-income and to affordable housing, why did it go to the wealthiest? So you're taking from the poorest to give to the wealthiest developers in the city that can get money from banks to build new projects and properties? No. First of all, we need single-member districts so we can have a citywide strategic plan that will help us to identify where the housing needs are and to work with our community organizations and nonprofits to come up with the best practices so that we can strategically plan on where we mix the housing and help people, first of all, to have economic stability. They need jobs so that they can afford a place to live. Thank you.
I want to encourage people who have questions in the audience to please hold them up, so we can grab them if that hasn't happened already. We'll be taking those in just a moment. On a slightly lighter note, Portland is increasingly a tourist destination. What amenities would you promote to improve the tourist experience, and how would you finance them? Beginning with Mr. Fish.
Well, we are becoming a destination for a lot of reasons, and let me talk for a moment about a growing area of opportunity, and that's as a creative hub and a creative economy and a creative destination. We are a city now that because of the generous support of taxpayers and philanthropy and private individuals, has a very dynamic arts and culture scene. And we're outperforming, based on our size, in areas of dance and jazz and music. We're a city that agreed to tax ourselves to make sure children had arts education. We're a city that believes that arts and culture should be accessible to all. We're now a city where movies and TV shows are being filmed. So we've got this moment, and one of the things I'll be talking about tonight at the Arts Forum, is how do we make sure this becomes a lasting moment and not just a blip? How do we make sure this creative economy makes us the cultural destination on the West Coast?
Thank you. Ms. Maxwell?
Can you repeat the question?
Certainly. Portland is increasingly a tourist destination. What amenities would you promote to improve the tourist experience, and how would you finance them?
Great. Thank you. So first of all, Portland is a tourist destination, because we actually, out of all the cities, have four seasons where people can come and enjoy the different environmental amenities that we do have. But once again, we need to focus on a strategic plan for the city, so that when people come here, they can recognize that all people matter across the 95 neighborhoods, and no matter where you go within the city of Portland, that you can find viable places where people are able to enjoy themselves and not look to the left and see homeless people laying out on the street, or people that mental health, screaming and kicking at cars. We need to be able to identify what our cost savings are through audit and monitoring of all of our bureaus to see where we can inject into the economy and make sure that we have a viable economy here in Portland.
Thank you. Mr. Duro.
Well, I would like to see the private sector take care of most of these amenities, but I would say that we should look to things like OMPA, which is Oregon Media Production Associates, that are doing a really good job bringing shows like Portlandia to Portland, bringing shows like Grimm to Portland, and I think that this is something that we can build on. Maybe make some kind of tourist attraction that goes along with those. We were supposed to have Will Veaton Studios a long time ago, and that never happened. They tore out a whole bunch of rail for that, and it didn't occur. The other thing is, I'd like to see something done with West Hayden Island, where they were talking about building a transfer station. That's a wonderful, pristine area that we could have kayaking, we could have nature walks, and we should take advantage of that.
Thank you. Oh, right. One role of a city commissioner is manager of a large bureau. Describe your management experience and style, beginning with you, Ms. Maxwell.
Thank you. As a construction general contractor for the last 14 years and being in business for the last 35 years, I have the leadership and the ability and the courage to, first of all, manage employees and large contracts. My last contract, I was on a joint venture team for the Portland Community College, which was $60 million at the Cascade campus. And being a female in a non-traditional role, I've had to navigate and manage myself in an environment where pretty much I was being discriminated against, and so I would make sure that I value the people that work with me and for me, and that's what I've done with my business and in the community as a community builder, investing in people so that people build projects, people build communities that build cities. Thank you.
I've been a Realtor, I've been a businessperson, I've been a network engineer, I've worked for the federal government, and I've worked within the private sector. I have a fairly wide background. I'm a consensus builder and what I consider a servant leader. I want to bring people along, and if I'm not willing to do it, I'm not going to ask you to do it. So that's basically my style.
Okay?
Well, before I was elected in 2008, I was a partner in a couple of law firms. So in that regard, I helped lead small businesses that had the usual challenges of a small business. I also held leadership positions on nonprofit boards, and in that capacity, learned a lot of the best lessons that have informed my public service, lessons about humility, about building teams, about owning mistakes and learning from them. Since I've been elected, I've had four very challenging assignments. First, to create a new housing bureau, which I did. Second, to manage Portland Parks and Rec during five years of budget cuts. And in the middle of my service, we won the gold medal as the best-managed park system in America. Now, the two utilities, perhaps the toughest assignment in the building. I kind of feel like I parachuted into the shootout at the OK Corral, but we are going to make the key reforms to strengthen public trust in what we do, and I will continue to be transparent, I will continue to reach out to the community, and I will continue to build the teams in the city to deliver the best value to my customers.
Thank you. An audience question, beginning with Michael Duro. Are you willing to help promote no charge for transit at time of service and pay for it by a transit area progressive income tax?
I would oppose an income tax, but I would be interested in looking at a vehicle mileage tax. We need to find a way, we can't build our way out of having, into having enough roads for everybody forever, or when the city continues to build. So we're going to have to start teaching people to take the go-karts and to take the light rail and to take the trolley. And if we can bring down the prices by shifting some of the costs, I think this, it would be a good idea. But no, I'm not willing to use an income tax for this.
So as a city commissioner, now, I think two or three years in a row, I've supported public investment in a program for our students so that they don't have to pay to take a bus to school. And that collaboration with the city and the county, I think, was terribly important, not just for our students and our low-income students, but as an equity play. Now, the problem we have with transportation, no matter how we frame it, is a revenue problem. And as cars are getting better mileage and we're getting fewer gas tax revenues from the federal government, we're left with a gap. And the gap is roads that aren't being paved, sidewalks that aren't being maintained. And in East Portland, that becomes a really significant safety issue. When a child cannot walk on a safe sidewalk or street to school, that's a safety issue. So Commissioner Novick and the mayor will come forward shortly with a proposal for how to reinvest in our roads and our sidewalks. I look forward to the recommendation, although my preference, and I've said this publicly, is whatever it is, I think we should refer it to the public for a vote.
Thank you. Ms. Maxwell?
Debbie, can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. Are you willing to help promote no charge for transit at time of service and pay for it by a transit area progressive income tax?
Thank you. Once again, the citizens have already spoken that by the fact that we've had a mass exodus of people out of the city of Portland, that they're tired of being feed out, taxed out, and so that's why we need single-member districts, whereby we can better plan and budget what our priorities need to be. And no, I would not bring forth any more taxes for no charge, but we need to identify where those cost savings are through audit of the bureaus, so that we can help those that are low-income and are unable to afford getting and using those services.
Thank you. I'm going to take a question from the audience and merge it with another one that's a little more general, and that would begin with you.
Are you looking at Michael?
No, who am I looking at?
I don't know.
Sharon. I'm looking at Nick Fish.
I'm one of the three of yous.
What reorganization proposals for city government would you support?
Well, that's a great question, because we constantly have, well periodically, we have this discussion and debate, and then we put it to the public, and the public says, "Not so fast." You know, what was that line of Winston Churchill once had about democracy? He said it's the worst form of government except when compared to all the alternatives. Our form of government is unique. We're the only city our size in the country that still has a commission-style form of government. And we constantly hear the siren call to change that, to go to a strong mayor, to go to a bicameral system, to put in a city manager. I'm not persuaded that we should change, because whether it's because of or in spite of, today we live in a great city. And again, whether it's because of our form of government and in spite of it, I think this form of government, with the access you have to electeds, with the participation of the citizens, and with the accountability, is still worth preserving, and so I am not a proponent of changing our current form of government.
As you have heard me say, single-member districts is what I propose. We have seen where, over the last 20 years, where people have different city commissioners, and Tom Potter, the past mayor, had brought up just a mayor-type of government with a city manager, and that was voted down. But single-member district, we did have this before, back in the 80s, and what it did allow was for more citizen participation, more opportunities for commissioners to be connected with the citizens throughout their district, so that they could have a larger and a better pulse on what the priorities were, what the needs were in the community, and that's what I am proposing as part of my platform for this city. Yes, this city is a great city, but the city still has work to do. There's been many people that have been left out and left behind, and we can do better, and that's what I'm going to do day one.
Mr. Duro.
If it does, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our questions. We now have, we now invite each candidate to make a closing statement, and we will begin with you, Ms. Maxwell.
Thank you, League of Women Voters and our viewers per video and the internet. As a public servant, Sharon Maxwell, a mother, a business owner, a community builder, I will, day one, bring courage, the political will, oversight, transparency, and accountability to this city, because to me, all people matter, people across the 95 neighborhoods. We can do better, and it's time to restore prosperity and trust to this city that works for all people, and I'm asking for your vote, May 20th, to represent you in this great city of Portland. Thank you.
Mr. Duro.
Ms. Kay, I want to thank you and the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to speak to you. A lot of times, people get shut out of some of these debates, and so I'm very thankful. I also want to say that this election is not specifically about water, though it is, or about single-member districts, it's about how we govern ourselves. That's what politics is all about. And the one thing I would urge you to do is, if you don't vote for me, vote for somebody, because your vote counts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for this opportunity to come before you today, and I want to echo the comments that I hope everyone gets out and votes. Fewer and fewer people are voting in our May primaries, and that means we're giving our proxy to someone else when it's our choice to decide who represents us. You know, in the last five years, I've had a chance to work with Governor Barbara Roberts on something near and dear to my heart, which is called the Freedom to Marry. I've worked with Senator Avell Gordley on a great cause, which is how we deal with the legacy of discrimination and displacement. I'm working with our Attorney General, Ellen Rosenblum, on protecting vulnerable seniors from exploitation. Commissioner Fritz and I are taking up the future of our reservoirs. Gretchen Cifory and I have worked hard and tirelessly to protect vulnerable people who need shelter, and Speaker Kotek and I worked on Section 8 discrimination last year. I'm so proud to have not only their friendship, but their support in this race, and I would be honored to have your support as well. Thank you.
This concludes the Portland City Commissioner Position Two Candidate Forum. We thank each of the candidates for participating in our forum. Thanks also to our timekeepers and our other volunteers. Please check our website, l w v p d x dot org, to view all of our forums on demand and for replay dates, times, and channels for local-access television. Pick up the League of Women Voters' Voters' Guide at your local public library, beyond this library. Online, you can check vote411.org for a preview of your personal ballot. Election Day is May 20, and as many of our candidates have said, it really matters. Ballots must be mailed back early or delivered to an official drop-off site anywhere in Oregon no later than 8 o'clock on Tuesday, May 20. Postmarks don't count. This is Debbie Kay for the League of Women Voters of Portland. Thank you for watching. Please be an informed voter. Remember that your vote counts, and make your friends vote, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Have a nice day. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.